So I am going to at this 6:32 PM. Call to order the regular meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee. And as always, we start with the pledge of allegiance. So if you guys would kindly mute. But follow along with me will rise if you choose. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Alright guys, so the next item on the agenda is public comment. We have none this evening, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. And I have a motion for the consent agenda that I can read if you guys just bear with me for one moment. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda of November 30th, 2022, containing the draft meeting minutes of November 9th. And the warrants of November 25th, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Amy. I open it up for discussion and feel free to use your golden hand or you can just wave me down here. I see Scott, go ahead Scott.
I have one question. Can you please enumerate which warrants we're approving?
Um, the, so the warrants, all of those included in the November 25th filing.
Forty-three, fourteen, forty-three, fifteen. Anything after that?
Yes, all four.
So sixteen and seventeen? So. We'll talk about this more at the BMW meeting, but I haven't seen any supporting documents for sixteen and seventeen, so I'm uncomfortable voting for those.
So, um, I wonder if, so Alita's not here, but if Kirk or Ross want to illuminate anything here, feel free, but what we have are four. Um, in the docu-sign, we're being asked to sign four warrants. The third one was relatively small, little over a thousand dollars for services rendered. And the fourth one was payroll. I wonder if typically we get more documentation. Um, for those two because Alita forwards the warrants every single time. She only forwarded the first two. We didn't get the third and the fourth one, or we didn't get any documentation for the third and the fourth one. I just wonder if there's anything you could tell us about the third and fourth one? Does the payroll one normally get broken out?
Miss, Madam Chair, you're asking the question to.
To you or to Ross?
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know if I was being recognized, that's all.
I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Yes, and I would defer to Mr. Omo Karen because I do believe it's the, the general salary warrant. Um, and then Mr. Mark Karen, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I would have to look back and pull those out and open them. Um, just give me a moment.
Yeah, that's fine.
I closed all my other tabs from the day, sorry.
No worries. Um, I think that if I were to pull up the docu-sign, I could probably get us there.
That's what I'm trying to do, but.
Mr. Powell, what were the questions on which two?
Sixteen and seventeen?
It's four, three, four, three, one, six, correct?
Correct.
So I will say that because I didn't docu-sign, it's, I don't have the completed one. So if anybody has the completed docu-sign.
And I'm not, and I'm not seeing them pop up in my. Cue from Erica Smith in my office.
Uh, Lee, I'm opening mine now.
Thank you, Amy.
Will it let you see the four?
So I see forty-three, fourteen, forty-three, fifteen. Forty-three, sixteen, um.
And then the last page should be the payroll.
And the payroll summary is the last page, forty-three, seventeen.
Yeah. Um. I defer to you, Ross. Would it be okay if I pulled it up?
Yeah, that's fine.
Alright, Amy, I am, I'm going to.
You want me to try to share my screen?
I think you should be able to now.
Yeah. Can you guys see that?
Yep, awesome. So this is forty-three, one, seven. Um, and if you could scroll up, Amy. To the other one, forty-three, one, six. Good. Yeah, so it's a little, uh, up to the next page too. It's a little over a thousand dollars. Up even higher, yeah, right there.
Thousand twenty, thirty cents.
Yep, so it says, um, on account of obligations incurred for value received and services for the materials as shown below.
Right, but we're not seeing, if you scroll down, uh, Mrs. Cohen, we're not seeing. There's no PO numbers or anything associated.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, we, we haven't been provided with, to my knowledge, the details for six, forty-three, sixteen and forty-three, seventeen. I, I don't want to get bogged down on this point. Like I said, I plan to talk about this more at the BMW meeting, but. You know, just wanted to bring that to our attention, so, you know, we can move on at this point.
No, there should be, there should be back mit, doc, uh, backup documentation, especially for that one that's got a expenditure on it from the 100 fund.
Yeah.
Uh, and payroll should have its typical backup documents. So let me make a note and I will bring. It to budget and warrant next week, and then I can provide an update to school committee at the next meeting if necessary.
That would be great, yeah. Yeah, so I know that Mike Horace, who is the Chair of Budget and Warrant, is, um, making this a part of that subcommittee's work. To kind of look into the process of approving the warrants and the timelines and the documentation and how we can kind of be educated on them. But, uh, that is for a later day. So Amy, you can probably stop sharing. Thank you for that.
There we go.
Great. Alright, any other discussion on the consent agenda? Alright, seeing none, I'm gonna take the roll. So let's go around the Zoom room here. Joe Gleason?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Scott?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Oh, Mike, I see your thumbs up. That's a yes. And Brett Collins?
Yes.
Alright, so, moving on, thank you very much for that. Um, we are going, or I am going to provide a quick update. Uh, the chairperson update, and I'd like to start with, um. A short recognition of someone we lost last week. Last week, we lost one of our former Nishoba School Committee members, Stephen Rubenstein. I thought it'd take just a couple of minutes to share a few things about Steve and his service. And afterward, I would welcome anyone else who wants to do the same to take a minute. So, uh, before retiring to Stowe, Steve worked in both industry and in education. And was also a union negotiator, which I always found really cool. He had this really diverse background. And after he entered retirement, he decided to lend his service to the Nishoba Public Schools. Which is how so many of us came to know him, and some of us came to know him well. He was the quintessential elder statesman of the committee. And throughout his five-year tenure, Steve served on the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee and the Negotiation Subcommittee. Lending all of his professional expertise, uh, to any matter related to fiscal policy and contract negotiations. He was dedicated to advancing the education of children, of all the children of Nishoba, and we are forever grateful for his service. On behalf of the Nishoba Regional School Committee, I would like to send our deepest condolences to his entire family, Nancy, his children, and everyone else who knew him. And. I'd like to just open the floor up now to anybody else who would care to say anything in addition to that. And I'll give it to Kirk first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to offer my condolences to, uh, Mr. Rubenstein's partner Nancy and their family during this time. And, uh, we're grateful to have had Steve with us. So thank you.
Thanks, Kirk. And Mike? Can I hear you? I'm not sure.
I don't know, can you hear me?
I can hear you!
Oh, isn't that wonderful? Um, well, I, I am, I, I called in and got connected just in time. I don't really want to, um. Say very much about Steve Rubenstein's passing. I don't, frankly, I don't think he'd want me to say very much. I don't think he was, uh, someone who needed, uh, a whole lot of attention. Um, but I was absolutely really saddened to hear about his passing largely because. I wasn't fully aware of the extent to which he had fallen into ill health. Um, so that really surprised me. When I first met Steve, it was my very first school committee meeting, and he approached me and he asked me why I decided to give my life to the school committee. Sort of tongue-in-cheek. Um, and at the time, I wasn't really sure what he meant, but it was, uh, I soon found out very clearly, Steve, but Steve really did that. He, he gave himself fully to the affairs of the district. And he thought very deeply and passionately about, um, what he believed in, and he advocated very hard for those things. And he clearly wasn't afraid to express his opinions to anybody, um, oftentimes in. Colorful ways. Um, but with regards to school committee affairs, Stephen and I really disagreed, um, much of the time, most of the time, in fact. Um, and he probably spent a lot of time eye-rolling my questions and my comments, but, um. I did start to figure out with time how he made his decisions and, uh, what he never knew about me was how often his comments and his. Opposition of my own thinking created these very slight critical shifts in my perspective. Um, and when I saw grays, he saw blacks and whites, and, um, I, I truly often wished that I could see things as concretely as he did. Um, you know, obviously, we know this, but Steve was really committed to the work for his town and for this district, and he could be stubborn as an ox. Um, but he would always simplify things down to their essence and, um. You know, sometimes it's just really important to acknowledge someone like Steve who helped to keep everyone in line and, and everyone honest, and for all that he did for the district that people will probably never know about, so. Um, wherever Steve is, I just want to thank him, even though at the moment, he's probably still eye-rolling me. But thank you for everything, Steve.
Thanks so much, Mike. I'll give it to Joe next.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I, you know, I wanted to kind of, uh, tell the committee something. And tell the district something, tell people who are listening something, uh, about Steve. And I'd sort of like to celebrate his life a little bit as opposed to, uh, lamenting his passing. Um, and I, I'm not sure anybody would find this of great interest. I found it absolutely fascinating. Um, Steve sent me via my Nishoba Regional School District email address. Uh, a video of his participation in the 1962 Tournament of Roses, Rose Bowl Parade in Pasadena, California on January 1st, 1962. If anybody's interested, Minnesota beat UCLA 21 to 3 in that game, but Steve got to march down Colorado Boulevard. Famous thoroughfare through Pasadena as part of the Fitchburg High School marching band. And, uh, the reason I bring it up is, is that, um, since he sent it to me via the, um, by my, uh. Nishoba Regional School District, uh, email address, it is now a matter of public record. So, um, Steve, wherever you are. Uh, you are a great guy. I'm gonna miss you and, uh. You know, uh, I'm, I'm so jealous that you were there in 1962 with the Rose Bowl. So thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Thanks, Joe. He will definitely be missed. So if you don't mind, I'd like us all to just mute our mics and take about a minute of silence. And remember Steve Rubenstein. Uh, so, other news here on the Nishoba School Committee, I would like to extend a warm welcome to our newest member. And that is Scott Powell. Hello, Scott, welcome. We are so happy to have you. We thank you for your service as well.
Thank you, Lee, I appreciate that. Looking forward to seeing what I can do to make a difference.
Great, thanks. I wanted to let you guys all know that, um, Shondor and Scott both participated in the School Committee Member Orientation this past weekend. With me, um, on Saturday for a couple of hours, we sat and chatted. And talked about all the things that we do as school committee members. And Maureen actually went through that, um, a few weeks back, and so all of our members have been oriented. And I just wanted to remind all of our members that, um, if you haven't yet sought out the charting the course. Course that all school committee members must take in the first year, there is actually an offering on December 3rd. Uh, that is the only date right now that MASC has posted for, um, the near future. So remember, everybody has one year to complete it, so perhaps it's no rush, but. I'm just putting, keeping that on your radars. The last thing that I'll alert you to is that the subcommittee assignments are now firm. And complete, and those are on the subcommittee page of our website, so you guys can see. Who has been assigned to every subcommittee and, um, the charge for each of those committees. And thank you, Amy, for bringing to my attention that the School Building Committee and the R-A-A-C was not on that spreadsheet. They have been added, and, um, I thank Alita for that. Alright, everybody. Let's move ahead. Whoops, sorry. So on to the Superintendent's Report, I turned it over to Superintendent Downing.
Madam Chair, thank you for your recognition. Um, and tonight's superintendent report will be somewhat brief. Because I know we do have some lengthy presentations and the Business and Operations Report to get to this evening. Uh, so the main item that I have to share with the committee is, uh, the, in your packet. You will have, uh, the report from the Department of Elec-, uh, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, that is the targeted review report. If you recall, Dr. McGuire presented on this last year. Uh, this is part of the annual auditing. Uh, processes of the Department of Education, and their focus in our review last year, uh, was in the areas of curriculum and instruction. Assessment and student support. And so the complete report, uh, is found in your packet. It leads with an executive summary, has some tables. Uh, that identify the key strengths that they identified, as well as the area growths. And so, recognize that in their study, they looked at district documents, they conducted interviews with stakeholders. And they spent four days observing instruction across our classrooms. And so what this report entails is, we're treating it as a feedback device. As we are a learning organization, we want, uh, to have these moments where people can give us an outside look of what our programs and services look like. In an effort for continual improvement. What, uh, I would like to say, when I first received a, a copy of the report and we shared in draft. Uh, and then later, it was, uh, in, in, in the past month, it was posted to the DESI webpage. Uh, is that many of the items that are listed in this report. Were discussed and processed throughout the strategic planning process. And that's why you'll see emphasis in curriculum instruction, assessment, and student supports, uh, throughout our strategic plan. Because we self-identified areas for growth, uh, in those major components of, of, um, the educational program of our students. We will take this, we will learn, we will continue to review, and as you know, at the end of the year, we're gonna self-examine to say, gosh, are there any things that, that, um. We need to adjust into our strategic plan. What I will say is that we might be able to pick up some action steps to apply. Um, at our next school committee meeting, you're gonna see a robust presentation on the curriculum work provided by Ms. Friend. And our, uh, curriculum directors, uh, that address many of the questions that might have been raised in this particular report. Um, I did submit to, uh, the committee, uh, I was able to submit, um, any additional information to DESI. They did not accept it. The focus was more providing data around the social-emotional learning supports that we have in terms of school adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, and social workers. And they just elected not to include that in the report. I thought it would have brought context to some comments around, uh, the need for SEL supports in the district. To get a totality of what we currently have, so we would have an understanding of what more means. Um, so with that, um, I'll solicit any questions, uh, before we get to, uh, Ms. Friend's presentation on 2022 MCAS.
Uh, Kirk, can I just ask you a quick clarifying question?
Yes, ma'am.
From what I was seeing on the DESI website, um, it seems they did nineteen of these last year. Do you know how schools, school districts are chosen and how often this happens?
Yeah, they, it, it isn't, it is sort of a random sampling process that goes through, and then there's multiple areas. We were selected for the area that focused on curriculum instruction, assessment, and student support. We're frankly grateful for that. If we could have handpicked the area we wanted them to assess, that would have been the one. Um, so, um, there isn't, it's, it's not like a coordinated program review, uh, in student services. That happens every three years, and you can put your watch to it. Uh, this is more, uh, periodic over time. We are, are, are selected, identified. Um, and we're given ample time to prepare. Uh, they gave us our notification early in the year last year, uh, conducting those interviews in April, so.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarity. Um, I'm gonna go to Amy Vessels first.
Uh, yes, I had a question about the, um, multi-tiered system of supports. I know that you're gonna be presenting on curriculum. Um, but I was wondering if you're gonna be presenting on what the district is doing to address that issue at a future meeting or.
Yeah, Ms. Vessels, uh, this is one of those important elements that did come up through our strategic planning work, as we know that we need to do that. So yes, we will be doing that on an upcoming meeting. We have prioritized curriculum instruction, as I was given instructions through this committee last year. That that should be the primary area of focus for us this year.
Okay. Uh, Amy Cohen?
Thank you. Um, I have two questions, and you kind of hit on them, but I, um. I want to ask them, I guess I want to kind of drill down a little bit more into them. One is about. Um, how the. Recommendation for building staff capacity around the multi-tiered systems of support will affect any kind of budgetary planning we're doing this year? Um, and I know that we're still early in the budget process, but maybe you could just let us know if that's gonna be changing any of the. Any of your priorities as you look at the budget this year?
Well, as I look at this report, most, Ms. Cohen, I'll, I'll answer your question as it relates directly to this report. Uh, this report is a tool, a feedback tool for us to understand what a, uh, an outside observer saw in our organization. Our strategic plan and the work that we've done towards this strategic plan and the presentation on that work is what our focus will continue to be. So we're not gonna treat this document in a reactionary way that we need to plug in, uh, X thing or Y thing. Um, so in terms of professional development supports and cost to that, I know that will be presented as part of, uh, the Teaching and Learning Budget when we get to the Budget Workshop on January 18th.
Okay, um. The other thing that was occurring to me, I know that you had already anticipated a, a lot of the recommendations that came out of this report. And have incorporated them into your strategic plan, which is amazing. Um, that we were kind of ahead of the curve on that, but. Part of your form, your presentation during the formative assessment. Um, will you be able to kind of give us an update on what work has been done? Um, related to these, the recommendations that came out of this report?
Um, I think what will happen, Ms. Cohen, I'll do my best to do that. But again, I want us to stay focused on what the, what we have charted as our path. So this report does not carry any type of, of, of weight. Or have any type of, if you will, sanction or additional supports that come from DESI. It is a reflective tool. So in that way, I think we need to stay committed to what we've committed to in our strategic plan. Make those cross-connections like you're talking about, and when we get to, uh, the end of the year to assess our progress towards the strategic plan. We'll be doing that by reviewing this document as well to assess what are our next steps.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Great. Any other? Queries or? Sharon?
Um, so I did not remember that this was something that Todd had told us that was happening last spring. And I was, uh, thinking, wow, that was a, a lot of work that was happening at the same time that this strategic plan was happening. Um, it's nice that they overlapped, um. In the way that they did. Um. And there was a lot of good information, I thought, in that report, and I'm so grateful to you, Kirk, and to the entire administrative team. For all the work that you've done, um, over the last year to really. Bring us, um, clarify our, our new path, our new plan, um, and to really put us on the. Path of some really good changes for the district. Um. There were a lot of areas of growth that were really exciting to re, or, or areas of strength, I should say, that were really exciting to read about. Um, and there were some areas of growth that really stood out to me, particularly with the upper grade levels. Um. And I'm. I think, so one of the areas that stood out was, um. You know, the work that's still being done for the social-emotional development, social-emotional learning. Um, and another one that really stood out to me was, um. The idea of concept development and making connections, particularly among our upper level. Um, teachers. And do you have, um. Thoughts around that or insights around that?
Thank you, Ms. Park. Um, a couple of things. I think you were more aware of that report than you're leading on to, Ms. Park, and, uh, maybe unintentionally because. In many ways, it was a lot more work to do, but the process that we went through in collecting the documents to prepare. The consultants to do that review were the documents that were the data sets that we looked at in strategic planning and thoroughly looked through to identify the themes and buckets. So I think that's why you're seeing so much alignment between the two documents, is because a lot of the information was common information. So it should be validation to that committee, um, that they identified, uh, many of the same trends that are cited in this report. In terms of social-emotional supports, uh, that are in there, it's, it's funny, there's one particular piece that cites it as a real strength, and. You move across, it cites it as an area of growth. Um, and so we wanted to get some clarity on that, we're providing clarity on that. But the work that we've done and that Ms. Friend has reported on the issue regarding, uh, Dr. Epstein coming to our school system and working with calm compassion model. Is one of our areas and steps that we're taking in terms of looking at, uh, social-emotional development and instruction across. That's a multi-year process that takes time, along with the multiple years that we've done, uh, working in the CASL frameworks and building social-emotional instructional practices. Embedded in instruction throughout the day. So that continues to happen. Um, then, and then when we're talking about our secondary students and, and those, those, uh, intellectual connections that you're speaking of. I'll, I'll again, uh, bring you back to some, uh, presentations, or I should say some reports. That Ms. Friend has given this year on universal design for learning. By putting a focus on universal design for learning and using that as a focus in our book study this year, both at the administrative level and the teacher level. Uh, that is, uh, our foray into working on how do we get into deeper learning, uh, principles? Uh, so that our students are, are making connections. Uh, this is where you're gonna see in curriculum doc, document, something called transfer goals. Uh, but you're gonna be learning a lot more about that in depth at the next school committee meeting, uh, at that presentation.
Great. Uh, Amy Cohen?
Thank you for letting me speak again. Um, I forgot to lead with my. Um, lead with, um, thanking the superintendent. lead with thanking the superintendent for sharing the report with the committee, posting it as a meeting material and just putting it out there as feedback that we've received. And using it as a learning opportunity to, you know, to continuously improve because that alone is worth commending you for, just having it posted as a meeting material, so it's out there for anybody to look at. The other question I had is about how this ties into the curriculum audit that is underway that the district has initiated? Because actually, when I saw this, I thought that that's what I thought that's what this was. And so are they independent of each other or does this work feed into that or?
Yes, Ms. Cohen, you can think of them very independently. Think of this report maybe as a, as a type of needs assessment. The curriculum audit is, is really getting into what the state of the curriculum is. And then over a series of years, they'll be going through the subject matter of the school district year over year to look in depth at all the curriculum. You're going to learn that in depth next, next meeting. But you should think of them as two separate things. But that this document is a needs assessment that further informs us and really gives us data around why it's so important for us to have a robust curriculum review cycle that looks deeply at the impact of our curriculum and instruction in the school system.
Yeah. Shondor.
Thank you. I too appreciate this document being shared and made public. It referenced the curate curriculum data table. And when I went to DESI's website, it appears to be blank for Nishoba. I'm wondering if I may be looking in the wrong place or where people can find that data.
Mr. Simon, unfortunately, your microphone did glitch on me for a moment. What was the element you were looking for?
The curate curriculum data table appears blank on DESI's website.
The, the curate table. Yes, I'm not quite sure about that, Mr. Simon, but we can certainly look into that and get back to you.
Thank you.
I did notice that the report showed that some of the curricular materials we are using across the grade levels are not approved. And so I imagine that all of that is a part of this robust curriculum review cycle that you guys are in full-blown renovation. We know that and you have everybody kind of charging ahead. And so, I mean, you're right, it all is plugging in and, and it's good timing. There are some other details in the report that are separate from curriculum that I, I imagine you are still going to be pushing forward on. And I guess we don't need to belabor the details now, but this is kind of a full throttle ahead in all of these different arenas.
Yeah, we are moving ahead of these all, all, as I stole Mr. Hresh's line earlier this year. We, we've put forward a very oh, listen, I now I'm forgetting it, right? It's a very robust and aggressive audacious plan that we have this year that does encompass the three buckets that are cited in depth in this report. So as we move forward to Ms. Cohen's point earlier, when we get to the formative review, we can certainly come back to that in terms of what our next steps are. In some of those areas you're talking about.
This is my final question, Kirk, on this. Was there anything in the report that surprised you?
I, I think nothing, I, I would say surprised me. Cause I thought the analysis that we did as a strategic planning committee, as a district committee as well, in, in trying to reveal these things, both through the entry process and the strategic planning process, I thought served us well. So as a result, the report wasn't a great surprise because we participated in parallel of a same deep examination. I, I have to tell you, Madam Chair, I think that was just dumb luck timing of hiring a new superintendent at the same time that this request came down, down the line because typically you wouldn't, those things wouldn't line up so perfectly the way they did last year. So let's consider us fortunate in that way in terms of learning about ourselves because while I appreciate your supports, and I mean the committee, in posting these materials, these are public materials. They're posted on DESI's website. And I think we should come forward and share with the public, certainly our celebrations, but also our areas of growth. Because at, at the heart of what we do, it's learning and we need to learn as, as an organization as well. So I wouldn't say there was anything that, that particularly surprised me. The area I wanted some more explanation in was around social emotional learning supports because there's some claims in there around a lack of those supports. And I wanted that just supported and pointed out with data. And they didn't cite that data specifically in the report. I do intend to cite some of that data when we come to the budget workshop and we look at some adjustments for social emotional supports in the school system.
Great. So just for the committee's edification here, if you're looking to read another seventy-page document, the DESI website has the other eighteen schools who were evaluated in the same cycle. And I found it interesting that Groton Dunstables was there and, you know, they're kind of alike district in some ways because they're regional, kind of similarly rural suburban, et cetera. And they had very different target areas and they have a superintendent who is in her fifth year, et cetera. So, you know, you can go and read the other reports as well to try to give yourself some context.
Madam Chair, I would just like to take this moment to acknowledge our Assistant Superintendent. Once again on this, she came to me with that very suggestion this week that we can look at those other reports to gain some context. So yes, we'll be looking at some of those and Groton Dunstables, one that we look, would look at.
Yeah, I mean, there's not a lot of parallels there because they did focus on other things, but some of it is like the MCAS results that are in there and things like that are telling. So thanks. Speaking of which, carry on.
Yes, Madam Chair, at this point, I would like, if, if you would recognize Ms. Laura Friend, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning for the annual presentation on MCAS. Side note, Madam Chair, as I expressed to you earlier, I'm having some electrical difficulties in the home. I'm doing fine now. But if for some reason I were to go camera off, you would understand why.
Thanks, Kirk. All right. Over to Assistant Superintendent Friend. Go ahead, Laura.
So Mr. Malkaren is going to drive the ship. He's going to share his screen. And is actually sharing the same spaces me, which is very kind of him.
Can you see that? Okay.
Yeah, it's in the note view. I don't know if you can do a full screen. Looks good. All right. So I'm just going to go ahead and dive in. Thank you very much for allowing me to present our 2022 Nishoba MCAS results. It really is a privilege to do so and I feel honored to do so. As our superintendent often refers to us as a learning organization, we find ourselves in a learning opportunity when we examine MCAS. So we do so with a learning lens and a growth or improvement. We look to MCAS to help inform our continual improvement efforts. And we recognize the value that the MCAS results provide us. We also recognize really that MCAS is one data point. It's one data point set in the context of a window in time. Say that speaking as a teacher and as a principal. It is one data point set within a larger context of data as well. Data that includes different kinds of assessments like classroom assessments and benchmark assessments, teacher assessments and observations. And as we know, our newly implemented universal screeners Renaissance. So MCAS is one data point in a larger assessment structure. It complements what we already know. It really helps to serve as a flashlight to further identify areas of growth and strength and areas of need, both with a student lens and with a curriculum and instruction lens. It's one tool. We also recognize that MCAS is a public data point. And so we recognize the importance of providing an analysis for our community and to explain how we are using information from MCAS to help inform our next steps as we support our students' growth. As you are likely aware from taking a look at the presentation, there are many facets of MCAS data. The presentation that I've shared with you tonight in your packet works to provide an overview of the results and next steps. There's quite a bit of information here, so I'm going to speak to the slides as a means of overview, highlighting certain slides in more detail and offering to answer any questions that you may have at the end. Please know this is a high level, level overview of the data and that the data has been further examined and analyzed with a curriculum lens and a school and a student performance lens. With our school principals and our assistant principals in concert with the Department of Teaching and Learning, that work has happened and will continue to happen at a deeper level. This is just an overview, this overview for you this evening. In terms of the structure of this presentation, the presentation has three parts, beginning with an overview and then providing information about performance of our students in our school district in our three content areas that are assessed. That's ELA, mathematics and science. And then providing for you a summary of next steps moving forward. So in terms of the guiding questions that helped inform the presentation, we have these outlined for you here. We wonder how our schools, schools performed on the MCAS. We wondered what the data looked like longitudinally from 2019 to 2022. And where are there opportunities and areas for growth to inform our next steps? Next slide. So stating the obvious, the last three years have not been usual. Although I think we may be hard pressed, or at least I would be hard pressed to define usual in any given year. But the pandemic certainly had an impact and the impact extended to MCAS testing as shown here. So as a reminder, last spring's, last spring's MCAS administration was the first full year of testing since 2019 for students in grades three through eight. And last year's 10th graders who took MCAS had not taken an MCAS test since they were in seventh grade. This is impactful for us to remember as we consider the cognitive requirements in taking MCAS and really the amount of sustainment involvement in addition to the rigor of questions. Last year, our students were finding their way back to school. Feels like a long time ago, but I can say that I remember it as a principal. And speaking as a principal who was able to observe and support this transition firsthand, it was a lot. And our students worked hard and our families worked hard and our teachers worked hard. And so I think it's important for us to remember this context of the testing landscape. It's important to note, not to minimize any results or performance, but simply to remind us of the context in which our students engaged in the assessment last. It's also important to note that because of the 2020 cancellations and the changes to the 2021 assessments, we really must exercise caution when working to measure performance and progress over time from 2019 to 2022 because the tests look different. So much so that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, considers 2022 last spring a new baseline for school and district accountability. It's also important to note in science, if you can just go back one. It's important to know in terms of science that 2022 was the first administration of the next generation high school biology and introductory physics tests. So the results from last year's science tests in 10th grade are not comparable to years past. Because twenty, DESI considers 2022 really a new baseline. Most school districts did not receive an accountability determination and that was the case for Nishoba. Schools designated underperforming or chronically underperforming were provided information. Nishoba did not receive an accountability determination. The next two slides are compliments to one another. And they reflect what the state has identified and gleaned from statewide trends from their analysis of statewide data. So I thought it useful for us to take a look at how Nishoba stacks up to the statewide trends. I've told Mr. Malkaren, this is an animated slide, and so to be prepared. No pressure. Okay. How did Nishoba stack up to the statewide trends? In terms of our math scores at Nishoba, our math scores also increased as they did at the statewide level at all grades. In grade seven, our results remained static. In English Language Arts, ELA at the state level scores declined across the board. At Nishoba, the results were mixed. We saw strong performance in grade three, which we'll see in a few slides, and improvements in grade eight. And student growth percentiles all falling in the typical growth category, which is further articulated in an additional slide, but results were mixed. We'll talk about that. At the state level for science, we saw an increase in grade five, a slight decline in grade eight. But again, that may not be unusual for any given year where we see slight increases and slight declines from year to year. The state has indicated that compared to pre-pandemic results, the department has indicated that there is a need for growth across all subject areas. We would agree. And at Nishoba, I think we would also further agree that that would be the case in any given year. We're always striving for continual improvement and further ways to improve for our students. The state has further indicated that at the statewide level, they've identified two focus areas for improvement. And those are in, in writing and seeing a low, an impact of lower writing scores across the board statewide as well as early literacy challenges. At Nishoba, we too saw the impact of lower writing scores on the essay in conventions of standard English. I'm going to speak to that in a minute. In terms of early literacy, our third grader's performance was strong. And, and second highest in terms of performance in English Language Arts to our 10th graders. Finally, a note here that, that I, that I, I think is important to note and that the state did not identify as a trend. And I, I believe as a teacher, a leader and as a principal that sustainment and engagement is an element that's associated always with MCAS and was particularly an element in our, in our performance last year and students' performance, particularly with writing. And let me just speak to that for a quick moment. Having been an English teacher at, at different grade levels myself and having supported multiple MCAS test administrators and analyzing student performance in writing and, and being a former scorer for writing for, for DESI. Engagement and sustainment on those writing tasks in MCAS requires a considerable amount of sustainment, executive functioning and engagement to task. So I would argue that as your students returned to school last year, after being out of practice for a bit of time, sustaining and engaging in those extended writing tasks is a lift and did impact writing scores. Students are growing in their practice in all areas. They've worked hard. We recognize these areas of continued practice don't necessarily come easily to all of our learners. So asking them to sit and perform in an assessment scenario while they're struggling with attention and ga, and engagement with a task that requires an incredible amount of synthesis of skills is a lift. So I believe that this is also a factor that we're seeing. We're continuing to support here with our learners at Nishoba moving forward. I humbly argue that that might have been a mess at the statewide level in terms of I've articulated there. I spoke about the why in terms of why analyze MCAS data at onset. We really take the totality of the information that we know about students as people and the data provided through MCAS as tools in the context of a larger and broader scope to help make us better. for our students. And that's why we use the data to help inform next steps, to help support student progress and give us a lens to look at what we're doing with our curriculum and instruction and where are there areas for further growth. So now we're into the second section of our presentation, and that is all taking a look at the data in terms of English Language Arts, math, and science. And so the next slide provides an overview, a high-level overview of student performance, which I've consolidated for you here by grade level and content area, grades three through twelve, and with student performance in each recording category highlighted by color. We will delve into this information further in the upcoming slides, but it's synthesized for you here in this chart. In terms of ELA performance at Neshoba, just wanted to highlight, this is a snapshot of a photo that I had taken a little bit earlier in the year of one of our English classrooms at the high school with their teacher, Mrs. Foley Proco, and Dr. Boynton supporting some collaborative work in the ELA classroom. Chart we have for you here is our grade three through eight ELA achievement. Shows our student performance by category as it aligns to state performance. In terms of the number of students that we see here falling within the meeting exceeding range, our performance exceeded the state percentage performance by 20%. When we analyze MCAS, we look at the data on multiple levels. We analyze data at the district level, at the school level, at the student level. We look at it with a curriculum and an instruction lens, and we also look at the data in totality as a student population and also by subgroups. And that's what we have for you here. We reflected achievement here for different subgroups in comparison to the state. And when we review the data, we see that our district subgroup performance exceeds the state in terms of the number of students falling in the meeting exceeding categories for all subgroups. And yet we also recognize that there is growth to be had while comparing our subgroup performance with our overall student population as with a discrepancy between the number of students falling within the meeting exceeding categories when we look to compare our subgroup performance with our larger population of students. We recognize this is a continued area of need and focus. I will further note that the low-income subgroup that you see here is a new subgroup. It replaces the formerly known economically disadvantaged student group. This new group includes a broader range of disadvantaged students per DESI's identification. The quadrant graph we have here shows student achievement versus growth by grade level. With the state growth achievement marker in the middle indicated as a star. Above the star, we have higher achievement and to the far top right quadrant is high achievement and high growth. The top right quadrant is our destination. Growth percentage categories are identified there and the key for you to see. To note at each grade level, Neshoba falls within the typical growth category for ELA. Additionally, we see here strong achievement in grade 10 and trending high growth, high achievement, particularly in grade seven. So when we take a look at these growth areas and the student growth, that that's powerful data for us to see because we see that our students are growing in terms of the typical growth category. The next set of data isolates our grade 10 ELA achievement. In reviewing our data for our 10th grade students again, those are the students who had last taken MCAS as seventh graders. Seventy-nine percent of our students either met or exceeded expectations compared to 52% of students statewide. And 99% of our students at least partially met expectations in terms of the passing criteria for MCAS at the high school level. Our subgroup data in grade 10 reflects a similar pattern of need as in grade three through eight. We're going to see that as a through line throughout the presentation. Of note, our language learner, that's our English Language Learner subgroup, is not represented here as it was in our grades three through eight because the student population numbers did not reach the threshold for creating a reportable subgroup at the high school level. The performance over time in terms of achievement and growth, this this information was provided on that last chart where we saw all the other circles and relative to the state star. This slide here portrays longitudinal growth from 2019 to 2022. Again, we tread carefully here when we work to compare results from 2019 to 2022, recognizing that there was no MCAS in 2020 and the test was altered in three through eight and altered in scope in 2020, 2021. With that, we see a need for continued growth across grade levels. The state calls growth recovery. That's the language that the state has been using. So using that language, we see recovery in grades three, strong performance there and in grade eight. And then when we look back at those former sides, we we see that our seventh graders did fall in the high growth, high achievement relative to state performance. So you necessarily wouldn't see that in this graph. The other graph flushes that information out. And looking at this information here, we recognize a need for continued support here at Neshoba in grades four, four through six. So those would be our current fifth through seventh graders in English Language Arts. The next slide just presents the the prior information in a different format with the rate of change by percentage reflected here. Provided for you here a summary analysis indicating that Neshoba's performance outpaces state averages at all grade levels. And we and we say that again, just in context, knowing that growth for Neshoba is based on growth for Neshoba and where we want our students to be. The percentage of students meeting exceeding expectations surpassed the state average considerably for English Language Arts. While continued growth is necessary, Neshoba is seeing some signs of recovery. ELA performance across all grade levels does reflect the need for improvement in the writing category, as I had mentioned there, with with my belief that sustainment engagement is also a factor. In terms of writing and the conventions of standard English also highlighted is a need for us at Neshoba. Our district principals and teaching and learning will be participating in a DESI-sponsored webinar that they're offering on December 12 on writing expectations for MCAS ELA tests. So we're interested to hear from DESI about what they're what they're to say about that. That's coming up. I spoke about our need to consider the performance of our grades four through six students, our current fifth through seventh grade students now. And our continued need and want to support our subgroup performance, all learners through targeted instruction, particularly our students with disability subgroup as an area of need. In terms of math, the photo here that we have is a photo of number corner, which is a part of our new math curriculum, our Bridges in Mathematics program. So in similar to format in ELA, so we'll follow our math and our science slides. The comparison to state performance here in terms of meeting and exceeding expectations, Neshoba exceeded the state for the number of students falling within the meeting and exceeding range for performance by 20%. And we have similar percentage of students falling within the categories as with ELA across the board. When we review the data once again, we see that our district subgroup performance exceeds the state in the terms of the number of students falling in the meeting and exceeding categories for all subgroups. Yet we also recognize that there is growth to be had when comparing our subgroup performance with our overall student population performance. The discrepancy between the number of students falling within the meeting exceeding categories when we work to compare the two. Our math achievement versus growth for grades three through eight here is shown similar to our ELA. All grade levels again falling in the typical growth category. Which is which is is hopeful and strong and supportive of our work as we continue to grow. In terms of grade 10, again, our our math achievement is similar to our ELA achievement. The 76 of our students falling in the meeting exceeding range and 2%, that's four students falling in the did not meet category last year for mathematics at the high school level. Our subgroup data for math again is similar and reflects the need to continue to support our students with the within these groups as it is supported in grades three through eight. I will say that yet in terms of growth, our subgroups in math also experienced overall improvement from 2021 in math as well overall at all grade levels. You can move on. Our longitudinal growth graph here for math shows strong recovery in grade three. It just again shows that from 2021 to 2022, we see an increase in performance at all grade levels with grade seven remaining the same as last year. The next chart just reinforces that data with the percent rate of change here on this graph. And I've highlighted here all the positive integers, which again is 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 wonderful to see. In terms of a summary analysis, similar to ELA, Neshoba's performance for math outpaces the state averages at all grade levels for the number of students falling within the meeting exceeding group. We recognize the continued growth is necessary, and yet we're also seeing improvement at all grade levels, including our subgroups for mathematics. With a curriculum lens, as I had spoke about, our need to take a look at writing and early literacy. With a curriculum lens, we see the reflection for further instruction in grades three through seven and geometry and a need for improvement in the articulation of mathematical thinking via constructed responses, which is consistent with our analysis and need for writing across domains as I have addressed earlier. Terms of our science results here, this photo was taken during some very strong middle school, science and technology, middle school curriculum mapping two weeks ago. So the photo's hot off the press. What you see here is our current state of science curriculum on the wall, units by strand and standard with our teachers analyzing the depth placement of pacing of units of study and discussing resource need and sharing ideas. Our district performance in grades three through eight for science once again exceeded the state performance considerably. Again, similar to ELA and math, with district performance exceeding the state for meeting exceeding by 23%. Our subgroup data here for science aligns with our analysis of performance across content areas. At the at the 10th grade level, again, a reminder that last year's administration of the science assessment was the next generation assessment. Where prior, the legacy assessment was administered. So this is a new assessment for our high schoolers who had not yet who had not taken the MCAS since seventh grade. FYI, grade 10 science results are reported based on students' best performance on science tests taken in grade nine or 10, knowing that there are different variations and iterations of the test of based on the domain. Once again, we see a similar pattern with our subgroup data and the need for us to continue to work to support the needs of our students with disabilities. And our students in our our low-income category, while our performance is stronger than the state, there is a discrepancy between our subgroup data and our larger student population. This chart shows again that longitudinal performance from 2019 to 2022 for our fifth and our eighth graders. We're we're seeing some static performance there with our eighth grade students and some growth from 2021 to 2022 for our fifth grade students. Further reflected in the next chart. And then then the the next slide provides a summary analysis of science. Again, similar to ELA and math, our students' performance well exceeds the state. We're going to going to continue to work to support our students and all of our student populations. In terms of the flashlight on the curriculum need through a combined MCAS analysis and curriculum mapping that we're fully engaged in, we've identified the need for further instruction and pacing with our physical science strand. And we've even drilled down to the topic of energy being the need at the middle level for their instruction and consideration when pacing it through the through the school year. Okay. So the the next few slides walk us through what our next steps this year are and then beyond. So we've consolidated and will continue to work to consolidate our data analysis of MCAS and have identified three areas of focus for our next steps outlined for you here, and they are curriculum and instruction and assessment, and we've added culture and belonging and the social emotional competencies that I referenced when we're talking about sustainment and engagement. These these areas and steps have been aligned to our strategic planning work that has already begun in full force. As we work to support the needs of our students in terms of growth and learning, we are working through many elements of curriculum review at grade levels across the board, content areas and domains. And we look forward to providing you an update of that work when we return in December as the Department of Teaching and Learning. This has included a revision and updating of our curriculum review cycle, which we will be sharing with you in December. As well as a need to take a look at our practices, the curriculum resources we're using and making recommendations for adjustments and alignment as a result. An example provided here is our realignment of our middle school science curriculum mapping and pacing to address redundancies that we've already discovered and to ensure appropriate coverage of all standards. For example, physical science using high-quality instructional materials, and that work is already fully engaged and underway. And I'm happy to say in collaboration and coordination with our high school science department chair to ensure a strong instructional vertical articulation from grade six through 12. The superintendent and I, in terms of providing high-quality feedback alongside our Neshoba administrators, we are conducting learning walks with our principals and our assistant principals monthly to strengthen our calibration efforts as we work to provide high-quality feedback for instructional purposes in the classroom at each school in the district. In terms of go back one, in terms of one slide. Thank you. In in terms of further work in curriculum instruction that's already going on and will continue is providing continued support for the implementation of our new math curriculum, Bridges in Mathematics, whose goal is to develop really students' understanding of concepts and proficiency with skills and their ability to solve complex complex problems and be able to articulate their thinking in multiple formats, including both verbally and in writing. Providing continued support in our classroom, the co-teaching model to help support the needs of the varied needs of our students that they find their way into our subgroups. We're working to realign our curriculum mapping as I had mentioned. And in terms of assessment practices and using data to target instruction, we have spoken already this year about our implementation of Renaissance learning as a tool to help make sure that we are identifying students in need Make sure that we are identifying students in need um in a responsive way. And using that information to help provide an informed targeted instruction based on what that information is telling us. So we're building our capacity. With Star Math and Star Reading this year as we work to fully implement an MTSS model next year. We're also working to support our building leaders. With Schoolzilla, which is the data dashboard we've spoken about to help track student progress and growth at the individual classroom and school level. And Schoolzilla all, is also able to provide us with specific information specific to standard performance. With skills and concepts at the, at the forefront. So it's also helping us with the curriculum and instruction lens as well. So we're building our capacity there. And helping our district leaders, uh, our building leaders rather do so as well. Okay, next slide. In terms of supporting um our students' self, uh sense of belonging and those castle competencies, which include. Uh, self-management and self-regulation um and then executive functioning. We're continuing to support our building leaders and our mental health uh teams across the district. With social emotional best practices and our calm compassionate teaching approach as superintendent Downing mentioned earlier this evening. We're implementing our updated curriculum maps to reflect the integration of our portrait of Neshoba graduate competencies, which. Include competencies such as perseverance, which transcend. Engagement to tasks such as with writing tasks associated with MCAS testing and other high stakes testing. And the intentional development of social emotional um competencies such as self-regulation, which includes executive functioning. We are also implementing a bi-annual panorama student um and staff SEL. Belonging survey to help provide us with information from student voices about what they need in terms of learning and needs. And engagement to the community in terms of climate. So that they feel safe and included and belong. And because if we know that if students don't feel safe. They don't feel as if they belong. It impacts student learning. So we recognize that that is a need as well. Okay.
Great, thanks Laura. And I wonder, I'm gonna try to get all of you onto my screen here. Does anybody have any questions about this presentation? It's a lot of data to take in. Thank you Laura, it's really comprehensive. Alright, so seeing none, oop, I see Mr. Horish, go right ahead, Mike.
Yep, you okay?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Uh, Laura, thank you so much. That, that really was comprehensive. Um, and it's a lot to um. It's a lot to offer and uh, but it's, it's really important work. I'm gonna invoke Kathy Codian, who loved using the phrase disaggregating the data. Um, and, and the reason why I'm gonna invoke that term is because I think one of the challenges in a regionalized district like ours is. Making sure that uh when students convene at the high school, they receive the same level of instruction. Um, so when you presented, you presented, for example, third through eighth performance, but. Is there any way that Desi or that we can get raw data and then see how our third through eighth at like center. And Hale compared to Luther Burbank and MRE and Florence Sawyer and Emerson, so that when they enter the high school. We can work towards aligning it so that, you know, they all have the same opportunities to move at the same pace. Moving forward. I don't know if that question makes sense.
Uh, I would say yes. Um, you, you know, when we speak about working with our principals and our assistant principals about looking at their school specific data, those are the conversations that we're having. Um, to support the readiness of our students as they enter the high school. So yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Uh, Amy Vessels.
Hi, um, I had a question about, I, I was really excited, I have been excited about the work that you're doing around curriculum. Um, and I noticed, uh, you know, you were talking about the concerns with the writing. Um, so I was curious, in addition to looking at the curriculum, are you also focusing in on the drafting process and good feedback with students on their. Um, drafts and the writing process? Is that also part of that?
Yes, absolutely. What I did mention beca, in my effort to, to move through as quickly as possible, I'm sorry if I went over. Um, I, I work, it's a lot, a lot of information. Um, we are actually accelerating the review of, of literacy in our curriculum review cycle, um, because we want to ensure um. An analysis of a strong foundation for literacy for our students and including phonics instruction. Um, and writing, and so we have worked in the curriculum review cycle, which we'll explain further next month. That we're gonna see literacy in, in all its components, including writing and the writing process. Accelerated in terms of assessment, analysis and recommendation for adjustments beginning in the spring. So yes.
Great, thank you.
Karen.
I guess I need a reminder, I, I cannot remember for um. Students with special needs. Do those numbers include um students that take MCAS alt? Or are they not included in that data?
They do not.
They are not included?
They are not included.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. So, seeing no more hands. I want to thank the assistant superintendent, Laura, thank you, that was obviously very comprehensive and um. A good data point, not the only data point, but a good one.
Thank you.
Alright everyone, so we're gonna head over to. The next item on our agenda, if that's okay with the superintendent, wrapping up the superintendent's report, okay?
Yes ma'am, thank you.
I'd also like to welcome Ms. Masterson to the meeting. Hi, Lita, thanks for jumping in. Um, so we're gonna move over to our student representative report and I turn it over to Dan and Hansi. Hi guys.
Hello. I'm gonna start with a, the result of our Thanksgiving football game. We won against Clinton. Uh, we're also looking to represent clubs at a, we were talking about it at Stuko. We're looking for ways to represent clubs and we're thinking of maybe combining that with our lift up plans, maybe. Collecting video footage uh in the clubs may, and adding it to the video or maybe making club posters. Uh, even a potential separate video to advertise the clubs at Neshoba. And uh encouraging club members to make club posters. By providing them with poster making material on certain days. And uh, on December fourteenth, we're gonna do some practice runs of the lift up, get an idea of what we're working with. And then on December twenty-first, we're planning on filming. And I'll turn it over to Hansi.
So winter sports tryouts have begun. The winter holiday concert is on Wednesday, December fourteenth. Challenge Day, which is a community building experience for tenth graders, is next week on December fifth and sixth. The DECA mock competition is coming up on Wednesday, December seventh. And I think that was it.
Alright, thanks guys. Uh, Dan, I just wanna know, will we be able to watch the lip dub here at our school committee meeting?
Um, I think as, uh, once we have it finished, I don't see a problem with that. That would be.
Oh, that would be awesome.
Good experience.
Any uh questions from the committee for our high school student representatives? Yeah, Maureen.
Hansi, did you say that Challenge Day is coming up?
Yes.
It, it's, it's a vote?
So, Challenge Day is basically, it's a kind of like a team building exercise for the tenth grade. They go through all like a series of activities the entire day and they just kind of like. Form new relationships with each other and it's just a good way for them to build on each other's relationships.
Oh, sorry, I thought I heard, I thought I heard that it was a, a voting exercise. I wanted to know what the vote is, but that sounds even more en- engaging. I like that.
If anyone isn't sure like uh what it was, um, it's probably because they didn't have it over COVID, so. Me and uh, I think the grade above did not experience Challenge Day. So it's kind of coming back now.
Thanks Dan. Yeah, it's a really transformative experience and all, and it, they've placed it in the tenth grade, I think probably developmentally it's best there. And um, it's meant to help bond the kids and it's been very successful to this point in time, so I'm really happy it's coming back. That's great. And they're, they are calling for parent volunteers, so if anybody's able to donate their time during the school day that day, reach out to Dr. Kate Boyton. And let her know you can help. Alright, so.
Wait, I have, sorry, I, I have one more thing, just adding, just throwing it in there. I'm planning a chess tournament that I'm gonna bring to the school, so.
You're planning a chess tournament for the school, you said?
Yeah, it's very early in the workings, but it's gonna, it's gonna happen.
That's amazing. Will it happen after school, Dan?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Brilliant. I have a board if you need one.
Don't worry, chess club has plenty.
Okay. Alright, alright guys, so thanks so much for coming in, hearing all that important information from the reports. And feel free to jump off if you have tons of homework to go and do or stay, it's totally up to you. But, thanks. Alright everybody, we're gonna go to new business and we have a couple of items here. First and foremost is the health and wellness presentation. Uh, probably buttressed by the concussion long-term absence protocols because Nurse Gilbecky is here to present. Um, Superintendent Downing, do you wanna tee this up a little bit?
Yeah, but I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. Thank you for the recognition. Um, yes, I would like to invite Nurse Gilbecky to come forward, please. Um, we've put together a health and wellness presentation for you all today. There's a lot of data sets in here. We won't be going into depth in the data. I think you can read these reports. Nurse Gilbecky will be highlighting some of those pieces. And I know there's been some questions from the committee around how we address situations with long-term absences. And so we're, we're coming back per your request and at this point I will turn it over to Nurse Gilbecky. Welcome Lisa, and thank you.
Um, oh, thank you, um, excuse me for my call, Madam Chair and Superintendent Downing for allowing me to um present. I'm just going to um try to get to my slide view here. Oh, oops. Apologize, here we go. Is everybody able to see that? Uh, is the shared screen? Again, thank you for letting, thank you, thank you for letting me present tonight. Um, you know, regular attendance is, is something that we really look at. Um, uh, on a daily and in weekly basis, um, in health services and, and within each school. Um, it's important for um the essential success of students in school, right? We need to be them um present in school um and ready to learn. So our attendance is reported to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in three separate ways. Um, we present with average daily attendance, which is the percentage of students attending schools on a daily basis. We do chronic absenteeism, which is the percentage of students who have been absent ten percent or greater of the total school days enrolled, based on the days that we are looking at. And then also the um absent rate defined as percentage of enrolled students absent eighteen or more times. The next two slides will provide you with a clear picture or an overview in the Shoba Regional School District. As it stands today, we get this data from Schoolzilla currently right now, which is pulled from Power School. Um, and we will address these reporting items, um, the average daily attendance, the chronic absenteeism and the absent rate um for the district in the next slides. You can see in this first slide, the, the Shoba Regional School, this is average, average daily attendance as of right now. Um, we're at ninety-four point, point five percent. Um, this was no change from last year, so if you can see where November is of twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, we're at ninety-four percent and last year around the same time, November twenty-one, twenty-two, we're at ninety, ninety-four point five percent. Um, last year during the winter months, if you can see how it was trending down. Um, we had a decrease in the average daily attendance and a lot of that had to do with COVID. We were still dealing with a lot of COVID issues at that point. Um, in the spring, you can see from um January, we're getting to the spring, it was March, April, we kind of, you know, had some improvements or maintained. Um, but a lot of that had to do with the testing state of pool testings that were continuing to happen. I, I believe we've re- maintained that quite well, um, because we were very diligent on when students could return to school in a timely fashion. In a safe and healthy environment um to come back during those COVID, um, COVID times. When we look at the second graph of chronic absenteeism. We are at seventeen point three percent right now to date, which is a one point four percent points lower. Than this time last year. So if you can look at last year's numbers, November twenty, twenty-one, we were eighteen point six and we're now at seventeen point three. Keep in mind that chronic absenteeism again is that percentage of students have been absent ten percent or greater of the total school days enrolled. Last year at this time, five hundred and eighty-seven chronically absent out of three thousand one hundred forty-one students, given that that eighteen point seven. Um, compared to this current year, we have currently right now five hundred and thirty-nine out of three thousand ninety at seventeen point three percent. There can be a variety, excuse me, of reasons for chronic absences. Chronic medical conditions, social emotional challenges of returning back to school. Uh, spike in cold flu and RSV this season, which we're seeing that spike um currently right now, um, and many other factors. Um, out, out of district um services, et cetera. When we look at the third um absent rate, um, zero point nine percent to date, it's a one point three percent point decrease. From this time last year. Um, so. Overall, right now, we're at that one percent and last year we were at two point four. Again, the absent rate is defined as a percent of enrolled students absent eighteen or more times. Um. Last year at this time, this district had seventy-four at that two point four percent um students. With eighteen or more absent, currently we're only at thirty-five, so we've seen some great improvements there with attendance. The next several slides of data are available for your review. Um, I'm not gonna go into detail as um Superintendent Downing um. Mentioned for viewing and discussed at this time, however, they do follow the same guidelines. You can see Bolton, um, average daily attendance. The um average, um, the chronic absenteeism and absent rate, and we did that for each school here for your viewing afterwards is Bolton. Then you have Lancaster MRE, Lancaster Booth of Burbank. Stowe Center School and Stowe um Hale Middle School in that same format. We will pause here though and start and, and talk a little bit about Neshoba Regional High School and those same data points. So for the first slide here, we have um New Region High School Average Daily Attendance. Ninety-three point four percent. It's a one point seven percent point increase from this time of last year. Ninety-one point six last year, um, and ninety-three point four this year. The district um would like to see this number come up a little bit for the high school. Our goal. Um, is ninety-six percent for an average daily attendance. Um, but with the start of the school year, again, we still had many um full flu, cold and RSV season, um, along with some COVID. Um, we're hoping that these numbers will get better as we see more, um, you know, students that are vaccinated and boosters. And um RSV season should be slowing down very shortly. It happens every year around this time. We just see an increase this year um due to masking for the last few years. The second slide for chronic absenteeism, twenty-three point five percent to date, a six, at six point eight percent decrease than this time last year. Again, looking at chronic medical um. Um, significant health issues, outside services, struggles with social emotional. Um, they, sometimes we see this not currently at this point, but we will see sometimes the chronic absenteeism with um families that choose to take holiday. Um, during um non-holiday seasons for um in February and April vacations and take them um with convenience for families. So we will sometimes see that as a chronic absenteeism as well or increase in that. This third thread of absent rate, again eighteen or more, we had three point one percent to date. A four point three percentage point decrease from this time last year. Um, looking at absent rates, we do send out letters. Um, will be provided to families of students beginning at ten or more absences, just to have a collaboration with families um and students um. Uh, identifying that there's an increase in absenteeism, what can we do to help support them? Um, also, the high school receives letters to families of those who may be missing credits towards courses too, and this is uh based on the student handbook as well. Excuse me. So what are we doing about it to help students and families? One of the things on a daily basis. The health services or the nurses along with principals and administrative assistants work closely with those students that call in sick or absent for other reasons. We also reach out to families that do not call in their students, the children, I'm sorry, absent to follow to find out why they are not there. So that to look at if there's any trends and any areas of concern that we need to help families and our students to, to make them successful into coming into school. We also have a resource nurse that is available to assist with chronic medical conditions and assist as a case manager. So currently this year, we are up to, I think, twelve cases with the resource nurse. Last year, I think we had eight total for the year. So we've really seen an increase in the services being provided by the resource nurse, which is really a great tool for families to help assist with finding medical necessities or other resources that are needed to help facilitate students coming back into school. Again, I already mentioned notifications are sent to families. I will discuss a few more details about some of the programs and protocols and to support students return to school or attending in the next few slides. One of the items that for discussion was concussions. The process for concussions, if it's a student. Each student is who is removed from a practice, competition or event for a head injury or suspected concussion or exhibit signs and symptoms of a concussion must attain and present to the certified athletic trainer and/or the school nurse or administrator in the building, a form completed by their physician indicating that they've been diagnosed with a concussion. The form of documentation will be reviewed by the athletic trainer, school nurse, and again, as a team prior to approval before giving for return to play. If it's required based on concussion protocol from the primary care provider and the team, an academic accommodation plan will be developed by the students, teachers, guidance counselor, school nurse, parent and members of the building-based student support team or individual education program team as appropriate and in consultation with the student's primary care provider or the physician who made the diagnosis as managing the student's recovery. The certified athletic trainer or the school nurse will conduct a gradual return to full academic and extracurricular athletic activity plan using a return to participation person criteria and again, in consulting with the primary care provider. There were many accommodations, plans that shall include instructions for students, parents and school personnel addressing but not limited to physical and cognitive rest as appropriate. Many of our students when they develop the headaches during the day or need those breaks throughout the day, they do come down to the nurse's office, lights are off. So they can rest and rest their brain at that time and then return back to class when it's appropriate after being evaluated. They graduated, returned to extracurricular activities and classroom studies as appropriate. Including accommodations or modifications as needed within the classroom. When we look at long-term absences. We have two forms, one which is fairly newer to us. But the original form, the physician's affirmation of need for temporary home or hospital education for medically necessary reasons. If we are aware, we're not always aware of some of the needs for various reasons, but upon receipt of a physician's written order verifying that any student enrolled in a public school must remain at home or in a hospital on a day or overnight basis or any combination of both for medical reasons and for a period not less than fourteen school days. And in a school year, a student is eligible to receive educational services in that setting temporarily from the public school district. So this is a form we sometimes receive from physicians. A team is developed. We consult with the primary care provider or the physician that provided the note for that to see it's appropriate for the setting at the time. And then we, we, educational services are provided and developed for that student. The second one is very similar. It's if the opinion of the student's physician, again, an eligible student is likely to remain at home in a hospital or in a pediatric nursing home for medical reasons for more than sixty school days and in a school year. The administrative special education shall without undue delay convene a team to consider evaluation needs and if appropriate to amend the existing IEP or develop a new IP suit to students' unique circumstances. So how else do we support students returning from long absences? Currently at the high school, which is a new program, we're very excited about, which is the Bridge for Resilience Youth in Transition. It's pronounced Bright. It's a bright program for those students who are returning after long absences. The Shoba Regional High School Bright Program is a supportive platform for students who seek a successful resumption of school life. It's a slow transition for them to come back. Every student is very unique and the plan for their individual needs is identified. So it's not a one shoe fits all type. It says a short-term program provides supports that are customized to each student's needs and are culturally competent, clinically formed and flexible. It is a social worker who collaborates as the academic team and develops a plan best suited for student services in the Bright Program. So it's she's the liaison from the academic and scheduling needs of the student. Some students may come back and can only do an hour. Some may come back and can only do two hours. Some can come back for a whole day and spend the entire day in the Bright Program until we can transition them back into a classroom. I mean, sometimes that can also look for certain students, they may spend most of their time in the Bright Program. But are okay today to attend math and feel comfortable getting to that math class and then coming back. So it's again, it's, it's based on the needs of the student. And this is after those that have been returning after a long absence to transition them back in an ease, easeful way into the classroom. For others, including the high school as well, but we do an reentry program for all grades. It's inappropriate school staff are notified when a student is admitted into the hospital. What we're trying to do is look at students that are being hospitalized, whether it be medically or for psychiatric evaluations. That we stop the discharge process at the time of admission. So we're not waiting until they're being discharged from a hospital and then trying to look at a plan. We're trying to plan ahead of time. We do have some barriers to this because some providers from some psychiatric facilities will not share that information until they're discharged. And some will. So it's, it's, it's still a work in progress. It's collaboration and building within our communities. But a coordinator is assigned in facilities facilitates the reentry process with the team assigned and hospital personnel. And our, our goal is to get the kids back with a plan prior to them walking through the doors. A plan that's comfortable with the family, students, teachers and discharge instructions from facilities of where they've been at. And that is the end of my presentation. If we have any questions.
Thanks so much, Lisa. As always, very comprehensive. Looks like we have some questions. Amy Cohen first.
Thank you. Thanks for the detailed school by school analysis on these numbers. I just want to make sure I'm understanding some of the slides correctly. And, and then kind of get some perspective on you from about like putting it into context. So on slide twenty-three, you're showing a graph of the absent rate for the high school. And it's showing that fifty-three point three percent of students qualified for having eighteen or more absences throughout the school year as of June. Am I reading that right? Is that what this fifty-three point three percent number means like?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get to my screen, correct?
No, that is correct. At the conclusion of the school year, that was correct. That was clearly COVID impacted.
Okay. Do we track this data every year and is that, is that number like super high compared to previous years because of COVID? Or is that just kind of what you get at the end of a school year in high school or it just seems really?
I, I definitely think Ms. Cohen, you're gonna see a flatter curve this year. It is not a typical number because of COVID. This, the graph that you're seeing here is a product of our new data analysis tool through Schoolzilla that we're able to show you this information. So we expect the trend line to be much lower. So just by virtue of the fact that it's dropped at this point compared to last year by four point three percentage points is a strong indicator because as Miss Gilbecky said, thirty-five students compared to seventy-four at this time last year. So we, it, it's been cut more in half at this point of the year.
Okay, and maybe at the high school, two things like travel for any absence, like excused absences would fall into this category too. So if students are traveling for any number of reasons related to academic reasons, it would be captured in this number too.
That is correct.
Okay, alright, that makes me feel a little bit better.
And Ms. Cohen, if, if I may just add a little bit of color as well. Our high school team has made this a goal of theirs. Our high school administrative team. So they're very proactively putting strategies into play to get back to pre-pandemic levels and even better at the high school. So we're excited to see the results of their efforts.
Yeah.
Great. Let's go over to Karen.
I'm just looking for a little clarification about the Bridges Program. So that is a program, I understand it's short-term, but it is essentially for any student that may need reentry support. So it could, it's not, it's not, it could be social emotional related issues, but it could also be concussion. It could be returning from surgery or anything like that.
Yes. Correct. We don't see very many for the concussions because the concussion, concussion that typically can tend, can go to class. And the modifications are usually they just need the rest period. And this program is really not for that rest period. So you wouldn't see many concussions in here. It's, we, we pretty much maintain that within the nurse's office and it's more or less just those rest periods. They need, they have the lights off. They need to rest their brain because it's they can only have so much time looking at paper and computers throughout the day. You're really looking at more of those that are having a transition period of coming back to school and need additional supports. So we don't see those absentee rates go down, right? Or, or up, I should say, I'm sorry. So we're not seeing that they're chronic absent that I can't make it through the door today. Well, let's try for an hour. Let's get you back into school a little bit. And there is a social worker that's in there. So they work with the students academically and emotionally.
Okay, so it's really kind of more focused on kids that need emotional support returning to school.
Correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Maureen.
Hi, I'm trying to understand the difference between chronic absenteeism and the absent rate because isn't ten percent of total school days eighteen? Isn't that the same?
Yes, but the chronic absenteeism is like a real-time number of today. So it's based on today's number. So if we're we've been in, I'm gonna pull, pull a number out of my hat, seventy days at this point. If you have seven absences to date, you're chronically absent, but you wouldn't register under the eighteen total. So think of the eighteen as a benchmark line and the, and, and the chronic absenteeism as a that point in the school year.
Based on like where, where we are, like how many days in?
That's right.
Okay, got it. And then I had another question. So I'm wondering, is there like any concern about the attendance rate? And the, the current trend downwards since we're kind of in a trifecta right now of flu, RSV and COVID, like what, at what percent of total population absent from school is that causing like disruption for the entire class or making it too difficult for classes to catch or kids and classes to catch up. I know we were kind of steady on average around ninety-three percent in the spring, winter, spring last year. But the high school did drop to like eighty-nine percent, I think. So what's like, what's the percent that there starts to be problems?
Yeah, it, it would be hard for me to put a, a marker on that. I think what we need to just kind of look at is get a sense of what do we understand relative to the conditions that we have. So our goal is ninety-six percent. That is a state benchmark on school accountability reports. And so as we work toward that, we're dealing with many factors. And one of the factors that is, I think contributes to this is pre-COVID. I think we're more predisposed to send our, our kids to school when they have the sniffles, for instance. And one of the things that, that COVID really had us really examine and look at and trained in the community was be cautious and stay home first. So I think we're seeing some of that impact there. In terms of learning in the classroom, we're not seeing that kind of impact and our teachers understand, know that, that, that grace should be given in those scenarios in order to help students make up and recover from any time that was lost learning there.
Okay, and so no major concerns with coming out of Thanksgiving and heading into a lot of December holidays that we might see some of these schools. I, I think the high school and center school are the lowest right now. But the others are pretty close at ninety-five.
I think it would be reasonable to expect that as we see reports about the cold and flu season as we come along, that we're gonna see some impact there. Nurse Gilbecky, you can speak to this probably more clearly than I am. I think what we're going to see that we didn't necessarily see because of the COVID surges that happened January, February and March last year is our recovery rate of attendance later in the school year. But Nurse Gilbecky, I'll let you speak to that matter.
Yeah, I mean, we, we certainly have seen a little bit of an uptake, obviously flu and cold season. I wouldn't just say COVID, right? We had quite a few cases of influenza that have come through so far this year, which again, we didn't see that last year because the focus was always on COVID and, and the testing was not there as much or we just weren't catching the influences. We've had a few cases of RSV across the district. Again, some of those cases though, that may not be presenting at school, so to speak. When I say that, I mean we have families that may not have their students tested. So I think the numbers are still low for us and they're higher than what we actually have reported. But the absences are still there. Active, they're not feeling well. We, we do have families that are sending students with those mild colds to school and then those that are not. So it's, you know, our numbers are gonna be, it's gonna be hard to track some of those. But I think we're gonna see what we've seen pre-pandemic during the flu and cold season. I think we're gonna see numbers that are gonna be very similar this year.
Alright, so, and I would say too that I want to be really clear that Lisa works in tandem with the Boards of Health and is in constant communication with them around what kinds of decisions should be made around the public institutions of the three rounds. And that that's really now no longer our purview is to close schools down. It really is the Boards of Health that need to step into that role that the bylaws in the charter actually empowers them with. And so I look forward to, you know, seeing them do that as, as they really didn't last year or the year before. So let's go over to Sharon. Sharon, I think you're muted.
I put my hand down, but I didn't unmute. So my question, thank you for recognizing this, my question. It's specifically related to children who are, who miss extended periods of school due to a chronic illness or a long-term illness or some other unprecedented event. And it sounds like you have a process in place for how to work with those students. I'm wondering if you have data to that shows you how effectively this process is being put into play, in, into play for students. That shows you how effectively this process is being put into play, in into play for students. Um, during the time when they are out of school.
Currently not with me as of right now, but there's something that we can definitely certainly look at. The bright program at the high school is is new. We're going into just our second year, we're in the infancy stages of that for the high school. Um, as far as um, the chronic medical students coming back, as far as data points and how this reentry process. Looks like, um, I I will be honest and share with you that the reentry process was developed right before the pandemic. We've tried to implement it through the COVID process, um, but it was, the challenges were there based on um. Chronic absences with COVID versus medical um, conditions. And we are still um, evaluating. Um, what is happening on um, with chronic absences and with medical conditions of students coming back. We're not successful all the time for various reasons. Some students um. Do not return because they're out of district placement based based on what their medical condition is. So it's not always um, a return to school. Um, but the process should still, it will take place. Um, of a team getting together and and supporting the students and how we can get them back in school. Are you looking for a specific data point for that?
No, I I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
If there is a way of assessing how that program is working, that's um, one piece. Um, and then another piece of that question I think I didn't articulate it in um. Quite as clearly as I could have, is what is the process that supports students during that time when they are not at school? So if you have a child that is um. You know, has an injury or has a, an illness that takes them out of school for a. Long period of time, then what is the process that supports those children uh, while they are not at school?
Yes, that was the piece that Ms. Go Beckey talked about, that when a student is absent fourteen days or greater. It's at that fourteenth day that tutoring services are put into place for the, for the students that are out for that significant period of time. Um, and what I will tell you is we are positioned today to monitor learning much better uh, in terms of the impact and. Uh, I would say, Ms. Park, that we would look at a student by student rather than overall program. We can think of it in terms of Renaissance learning, looking at our, our, our three sixty math and uh, three sixty. Reading as ways to sort of monitor those uh, pieces for kids K to eight. In terms of the high school, that would be through the individual assignments and assessments that they're given in their individual courses. Uh, but accommodations are made for time in those particular cases. And for the long-term absences, as I stated, uh, they would have access to tutoring services.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go over to Amy Cohen.
Thanks. I I don't want to drag this out too much longer, but my, I just have a quick question. Um, Superintendent mentioned that the goal was ninety-six percent that I think, um, I don't know if that, he said the state.
Yeah.
Makes that the goal. So is there any consequence to our district if we're not hitting ninety-six percent? Um, you know, what effect does that have on us?
Yeah, Ms. Cohen, that is one of the major reasons why the school accountability report. Uh, one of the major elements why school accountability reporting was put on hold because no school in the States were meeting those benchmarks. Um, and so it is reflected in your school reporting. So it can be reflected in terms of which tier. Comes into your school reporting. We're not anywhere near any types of threatening. Levels for corrective action or any type of state um, interaction with that. That would be dramatically lower.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Maureen.
Along the same lines, and Leah, I appreciate you pointing out that the Board of Health should identify the trends now and step in if necessary. That's a, that's a really good point. Um, do, do we know? Like how our district is comparing right now to the? Other schools in the area, maybe not the state, like are we all kind of around the ninety-five percent? So or ninety-four, ninety-five percent, like is that the new average?
Yeah, I I I couldn't comment on any other school systems. Um, just when I meet with superintendents and our collaboratives and we talk about those things. You know, we informally or or, you know, we would say, yes, we're seeing some of those things, but. I hear stories of it's not the same that impact as last year. Uh, but what I, what I do hear is at times. Uh, we may see more students out on a given day, but the duration that they're out is much tighter, much shorter. So they might be out one day or two days as opposed to five, six, seven days.
Great. Um, I would just say that I think that we are, we always do such a, a great job. In the K to eight model of managing these sorts of things because it's a team model. Or it's a single teacher, et cetera. There's just a lot more oversight over each individual kid. But once we get up to the high school. Everything starts to splinter naturally because um, you know, the teachers aren't working in teams. And so. I'm, I'm concerned that for kids who are out for less than fourteen days. You know, maybe they're out for eight, eight school days for whatever reason. I feel like that is the sweet spot where we might have the most problem. Because it's, you know, kids who have high profile situations, everybody is very quick to team around them. But it's the kids who are having to manage with their, with their seven teachers at the high school level, coming off a really big illness. And those grades have way more impact at the high school level than they do at the middle and elementary school level that. You know, kids are getting dinged. So um, you know, teachers individually work super hard to. You know, pick this up for kids and help them and make accommodation. But, you know, working through perhaps the counseling office or, you know, I know that this is operational matter, but. Um, you know, kids are under that fourteen day window and they slip through, they can slip through the cracks. With those seven teachers all doing their very best, but perhaps without a colla-coordinated effort around the individual kid. So I would just put that out there to say that that might be the frontier we need to explore a little bit. Um, that that tier two stuff.
Madam Chair, I I think I would respond in a couple of ways. I I think the first thing I would say is the. Increases you're seeing relative in the environment at the high school compared to the other schools is pretty dramatic over last year's data. I think that's due to some very specific efforts that our administrative team is actually doing right now. Um, the other piece that we have to do is work with students on developing their own agency. Uh, to take the necessary steps that they need to in order to reach those pieces. The notification efforts that our team is doing now. Um, when they're reaching into that eight to ten absent threshold to families is important. And uh, I'll tip. Uh, you off to some exciting things so that we are gonna have coming up. The Power School app has the uh, opportunity to give parent notifications in a real-time basis, course by course. And so we're gonna be doing some trainings with our principals in January. And then we're gonna be putting out some training videos to our community. On how to download the Power School app and receive real-time notifications of when students are not in class. So as we do that, those are gonna be some of the communication efforts that'll help with that.
Okay. Alright. So let's move on to our next matter on the agenda. Before we do that, let me thank Nurse Gilbecky for being here and for giving us all of that information. Thanks, Lisa, for pulling that together. We appreciate it as always. So we're gonna move over to Policy K C D. We have a first reading tonight. It's a very short policy. Um, public gifts to schools. I'm gonna hand it over to our Policy Subcommittee Chair, Karen Devine. Karen, will you give us just a little bit of info on this and then we can just open it up for a little discussion?
Yes, and I apologize, my, my um, computer is reloading, so I now don't have it in front of me. But um, essentially this is about gifts uh, that are given to the district. Uh, you'll see there's the red line and then the uh, clean version. And um, the top part, I don't know why it's not loading, I'm sorry. Trying to get it to come up. Let me see. Oh, Alita, you're so good. Is it coming? So the main, uh, thank you, Alita. Um, you can see that top part there has been removed about the superintendent having authority to accept gifts. Um, of uh, equipment for the school um. In the, so it it basically shifted to now everything is with the approval of the school committee. Um, the rest of it is more cleaning up the language. That second larger paragraph is really just cleaning it up. I think the, the gist of it is the same. Um, but you know, they switched it to um, that it is um, sorry. There we go. Uh, that, you know, it's in a separate general fund instead of a separate account. Just some of the wording was cleaned up a bit. Um, and then the middle part there, gifts that would involve changes in school plants or sites will be subject to school committee approval. That was removed.
Great. Alright, so any feedback for our Policy Subcommittee? Uh, Scott, go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, so in looking at this, um, a couple of things caught my attention. You know, in terms of. When, when you're writing policies, this is the kind of thing that kind of. Yeah, I I'm, I kind of get anxious about because. So there are certain words in here that when you're following a policy, you kind of say, okay, so what does that mean? So like subjective words. So it says, for example, no extensive advertising. Um, can you qualify what is is extensive and what's not extensive advertising? You know, that's just an example of the kind of thing that I'm like. How is someone supposed to interpret that? Um, and similarly later, that later on, it talks about the superintendent. Making an appropriate expression of thanks. So, you know, that's again, it's a, it's. What's appropriate to one person may not be appropriate to another person. You know, how do you measure that? So. Just as we're, as you, as looking at policies and things like that, when you're. Telling people what the rules are, but it's not clear what the rules mean. I think that's an area that's subject to interpretation and can become problematic sometimes. So. My thoughts.
Karen, is this, so just so that you know, Scott, Scott, I'm not sure if you know this, but um, we are given model policies. And from uh, Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I wonder, Karen, is this one of those?
Yep, this is right from M A S E. So we'll look at it this first time and then. We can decide as a group if we want to make any changes. I never changed anything for that first reading except what M A S E recommends because I don't wanna. Do that at my discretion. I want everybody to see it as they are recommending it be formatted. So this is a great time to bring up those sorts of points.
Besides that, um, for them to consider. It says no, huh, it says. In the case of gifts from industry, business, or special interest groups. No extensive advertising or promotion may be involved in any of the donations to the schools.
Mm-hmm.
So do you guys think that we should just remove the word extensive? And just say no advertising? Or would that be problematic, Kirk?
I'm not quite sure because when I hear that, I also think of sometimes um, simple branding on whatever that donation is. Could be perceived as advertising as opposed to, you know, putting up the uh, thanks bulletin in the weekly update. As an example. Um, so I think that's worth some discussion and some researching there in terms of that language. It's basically giving us language to, that that just says, we want to recognize people that make donations and offer our gratitudes. Uh, but we cannot be a vehicle for which people give their donations that they receive a benefit. Uh, to their organization through the form of advertising.
Okay. And so, I mean, you could just add language there that says, you know. Um, which is left to the discretion of the committee. And so if somebody wanted to give us something and we thought that the advertising included would be too extensive, we could decline. The donation or ask them to remove it. So that might be. Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I may, uh, Rotary dictionaries is a good example of this one, right? Um, there's no advertisement on the Rotary dictionaries. However, there's a nameplate with the child's name that says a gift from the Rotary Club of Nishoba, right? So that would be an example.
Right. Go ahead, Maureen.
My only suggestion is that we leave the source as M A S E, but just update the date. Cause I think it's September twenty twenty-two is the new date.
Got it.
Yeah, that's easy. We can, we can do that.
Sean Door.
I'm just wondering if what constitutes a gift is defined anywhere? Like is cupcakes dropped off at the school considered a gift that then has to follow this policy?
Is there a threshold, Kirk?
I'm suffering doing this through, through a phone and a cell signal tonight. Thank you for your patience. Um, state statute around gifts uh, is the fifty dollar limit. Um, but Mr. Mulcain, in terms of the school systems. Uh, do you have some guidance on those threshold numbers? I think we have to bring before the committee, I'm gonna say this number, I can't, I'm not saying with great confidence. Uh, anything greater than a value of five hundred dollars. But Mr. Mulcain, can you? Uh, tell me what is the number outlined in master general law?
So correct, as a practice, the district has always brought donations of over five hundred, five hundred dollars or greater to the school committee for acceptance. Uh, I would have to clarify where that is in an M G L and if it's attached to a specific M G L, which would not be a. A hard piece to research for any uh, upcoming meetings of the Subcommittee for uh, Policy or the School Committee meeting in general. You know, and again, if that's, that's, that could be a cash donation, that could be a goods donation. Um, that can be lots of different things. Uh, but our practice has been five hundred dollars. I'm assuming that's tied. To an M G L or some sort of accounting practice that we've been advised on through our auditors.
So perhaps you could um, provide Policy Subcommittee with a little guidance on that? Just if we should put that threshold in there?
Yeah, I think it's worth probably noting. So if something comes up, uh, there's a, a policy to point to to say like why this donation was. Accepted by the school committee and this one was not based on a dollar amount.
Great.
So is that, um, Ross, is that something, it's five hundred, is it's over five hundred dollars, is the amount?
That's what the practice has been, Karen. I want to clarify whether that was something that was recommended through an audit. Or whether that's tied to a mass journal law specifically, but I wanna, I'm gonna find that out.
Okay.
Great. Go ahead, Scott.
I just want to say, you know, before we start getting into the weeds, I've started putting dollars amounts and stuff like that in here, you know, the, the very first thing that says here is in accordance with state law, right? So does it, was, does state law define the amounts that qualify as a gift and things that the committee has to approve? Can we just say? Whatever the state law says, that's the amounts we have to worry about.
Yeah, that's what Ross, I think, is gonna find out for us.
Yeah, okay. At, at, at the very least, if we could cite what M G L the state law means, I think that might be helpful because if somebody's looking to that. Um, for reference, I see the M G L at the bottom, but I'd have to double check if that's the M G L for process under school committee. Or if that's an M G L for um, the amount.
Alright, thanks, Ross. Karen will eagerly await that, as will Amy.
Yeah, I'll report, is it, okay, is that the will of uh, the school committee that I report that back to the Chair of the Policy Subcommittee?
That would be great, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And Sean Door is gonna be joining that Subcommittee as well, so.
Yay.
Um, and any other things to um, provide any more feedback on this?
Think that the last sentence is kind of odd about the committee directing the superintendent to assure that an appropriate expression of gratitude. Or something.
Yeah, I, I thought that was a little odd. It almost sounds like. He may not say thank you and we have to remind him. I, I thought it was a little, a little, a little odd.
Yeah, um.
Well, you know what I think it's ultimately trying to do is assign someone to write a thank you card.
I guess, yeah.
That's what it's doing. And I know that Alita is like a champion of this. Um, these things. And so I, I like it there. Um, I would be cool if you wanted to make the language a little more normal, but.
Okay. And then can we just come back? So in terms of extensive advertising and appropriate expression of thanks, are we leaving those? Cause now would be the time for us to discuss them if we want to change them, right?
I personally agree with Scott. I think it's an, it's hard to determine that. So I think the workaround is with, you know, up to the discretion of the committee. You know, we would need to decide whether or not that rotary plate is okay with us before we accept the donation. So perhaps we would need to ask if there's any advertising involved.
Okay, so I can add in at the discretion of the committee.
I mean, that's what I think, but I'd like to hear from everybody else. Let's hear from Maureen first.
I think like the way I read that last sentence, it is weird. I think like the way I read that last sentence, it, it is a weird sentence, but I think the way I'm reading it is saying like, we're going to tell him he can write a thank you card, but he can't exchange the gift for like giving someone a job or something like that. That's the check in place. You know, I, I think that's what they're getting to.
Possibly. Yeah, I would be fine with leaving the last sentence alone. Yeah, Karen?
Well, I just, I feel like some of this goes back to like ethics law, right? Like some of this is already already covered. We all do that training every year. We, I, so I don't know if it's, I don't know, it, it feels a little, I, I, I took it a, a different way, but, um, I mean, that is the law, right? That in terms of, of appropriate expression of thanks. So I feel like that's already covered by law.
Yeah. Uh, let's go over to Joe.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. I was just going to throw my support behind your suggestion regarding, um, you know, sort of a catchall provision at the end of that first paragraph regarding, you know, in the sole and exclusive discretion of the school committee. Because I think that, uh, in regards to my colleague, Mr. Powell, you know, if you start getting into whether extensive advertising, what does that mean? I think you just get too far into the weeds. I, I'm, I often remember that back in the day, beverage companies would donate scoreboards to school districts so long as they had their advertising on there. I think, you know, you, you place a scoreboard with a beverage company advertisement on it. I mean, that is there forever and that would deem to be extensive. So I think, I think I agree with you. I think it's a good policy, just, um, put a catchall on there. That's the sole discretion of the district committee, whether it is extensive or not.
Can I get a thumbs up from people if they feel like that would be a good idea? Or a thumbs down if you don't? Alright, I'm seeing consensus here. Um, alright, everybody. Uh, thanks Karen and Amy and, uh, in the future to Shondor for, um, ushering over the second reading, which will come at our next meeting. And after, uh, the second reading requires, we then take a vote. Alright guys, um, I know that time is short here and we're going to keep going. Kirk, do you have another MCAS presentation for us?
Madam Chair, that was my error. Um, the MCAS presentation was mentioned in the superintendent's report and again, there we're, we're certainly happy to give it again if you'd like to hear it again.
I would never torture Laura like that. No. Okay, so great. We're going to move on to business and operations and we will turn to, I assume, Ross for the, uh, October results of operations.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to present our October operations report. Alita, I know you're on. Do you need me to still screen share? I'm going to take that as a yes and go ahead and share my screen here. So this is the, uh, October F Y twenty-three operations report that is included in the school committee packet for this evening. Uh, a couple of things to note, uh, as we did last month when we looked at Ju- uh, July through September. Uh, we've added that light blue row at the bottom, which indicates our, um, operations report, um, summary at the end of October of last year. So we're tracking year to year at this point, uh, to give, uh, ourselves a sense of where we are at relative to our budget versus actual in the bottom right-hand corner there being a very important number, uh, as that essentially ends up being, uh, what we may be putting back into E and D at the end of the school year. So there's not a lot of changes per se in the, um, any one category, um, of our, of our, our accounts. Uh, certainly I continued to report insurance and benefits. The substitute teachers and athletics as zero because we're still expecting to, uh, expend all of those down. We won't know more about those until the year goes further. Uh, again, this is the end of October report. So, uh, for example, Tanya Rich, our athletic director has not finished her fall season at that point. So her projected expenditures to look at her fall sports expenses uh, was still in flux going up to insurance and benefits. Uh, we're still doing calculations and finalizing people who are coming on to, um, our insurance and benefits as well as what our obligations are to our retirees for the given year. So in the November report, we'll have more information and more, uh, detail that will provide a different budget versus actual. Uh, our facilities continues to be an area that we're really looking at and tracking. Um, at the end of October, we still hadn't had our propane numbers. Um, but we have those now and those will be in the November report. Uh, Mr. Freeswick, as always, is doing a great job of, of going through our utilities with a fine tooth comb uh, in anticipation of a very, um, uh, expensive winter, uh, as rates go up and, and continue to rise as well as our snow plowing, our snow removal, uh, contracts are looking for fuel surcharges. So we'll know what those things look like, uh, and we'll be able to account for those in this report in November. Uh, or at the, in December of the November report. A- anything further really is a similar sort of, um, explanation as before. We had some salary shifting after the actual budget was approved in March and voted on and by the towns in May. Um, we, uh, we've also seen some salary savings due to, um, some changes in enrollment and other areas. And again, as I explained, where we've had some retirees, um, where we, we're, you know, wishing our, our best to retirees, but they're retiring at the higher end of the pay scale and we're hiring, uh, the next teacher, they may, may be at the lower end. So we tend to see some salary changes there, um, and that makes up for a, a bulk of this. Um, other than that, there's nothing more significant, uh, that's come up. Um, again, it's the utilities that we're tracking, um, and I'll have more updates on insurance and benefits, which we know is a big driver in the November report, uh, probably at our next meeting. As always, I appreciate the opportunity from the budget and warrant subcommittee to review this report with them ahead of time and field their questions, uh, in anticipation of these meetings. So I don't have anything further on the operations report. Um, Madam Chair, do we want to wait for questions?
I think that's probably a good idea. Does anybody have any questions on this report? Alright, seeing none, Ross, you can carry on.
Okay. Um, our next, uh, item on the agenda does require a vote of the school committee. Um, we've had a very nice donation to the Hale Middle School from the Stowe Parent Teacher Organization. Um, uh, the cost of picnic tables will be covered by this two thousand dollar donation. Uh, Mr. Grady is obviously grateful and happy to receive this. I know that, um, uh, Mr. Grady's been working and has done some shifting, uh, due to the pandemic about how he runs his lunch block and he tries to get students outside more often. And I think that's a, a nice build of the independence as kids switch from elementary school to middle school. And so this will help serve that as well as in nice weather, um, counseling groups or small group instruction. Um, and certainly can be used by the community when there's events there in the afternoon or evening or on the weekends.
Excellent. So I'll look for a motion at this point. Uh, Mike, do you have that?
Sure. I'll move to approve, um, I'm sorry, I'll move to accept rather, a two thousand dollar donation from the Stowe P T O to Hale Middle School to cover the cost of two picnic tables for outside dining.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the gift? Yeah, go ahead, Kirk.
Uh, Madam Chair, I would just like to let the committee know that if this is indeed improved, the superintendent will be sending a note of gratitude to the Stowe P T O.
Thanks, Kirk. We appreciate that. Alright, so no further discussion. Let's take the vote. I'll go to Scott first.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Shondor?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah.
Brett?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Well, we thank the Stowe P T O for those fantastic picnic benches. All of our kids will definitely benefit from those, especially in the warmer months, but, um, moving on. Let's go over, yeah, thanks, Ross. Let's go over to unfinished business, everyone. We have the school improvement plans that we, um, that were presented at the last meeting, which was in person. And we are set to take a vote in approving those. And I'll turn to Mr. Horish for a motion.
Alright, sorry. Sometimes I have to find the mute button. Uh, I'll move to approve the Luther Burbank Middle School, Mary Rowlandson Elementary School, Nishoba Regional High School, Florence soils, Florence Sawyer School, Center School and Hale Middle School, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school improvement plans as presented on November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll second that. Do we have any discussion? Let's go to Mike first.
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Shondor? Uh, Scott?
Yes.
And I say yes. Thank you so much to the principals for those fantastic presentations. We are really looking forward to watching you guys work and rolling out all those great things. Alright, everybody. So to the subcommittee reports, let's start with budget and warrant.
Uh, nothing to report. Budget and warrant is meeting, I believe, Thursday of next week. We'll have an update at our, um, subsequent school committee meeting.
Excellent. And Scott is going to be joining you on budget and warrant, so very good addition there. To the communications subcommittee. Go for it, Sharon.
Uh, we have no report. We will be meeting, uh, next week on Tuesday.
Excellent. To the school building committee, Joe.
Uh, excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, first and foremost, before I begin my report, and I'm going to ask your indulgence, I got quite a bit to report here this evening, Madam Chairman. Uh, first of all, I want to just apologize to Mr. Mulcaren. Um, I did not, uh, review the agenda for this evening's meeting as closely as I should have. The, uh, school building committee has voted to make a recommendation to the district committee to include Mr. Mulcaren uh, as one of our non-voting advisory members on the, the, uh, building committee. Um, he would be brought on, obviously in his capacity as C P O. So, um, unfortunately, we'll have to hold off on this until the fourteenth, Ross, but, uh, Mr. Mulcaren has been instrumental even prior to Ms. Maroni's departure. So hopefully, um, Ross, this won't be a problem as we move forward, uh, through our December meeting. We'll, uh, have you on at a January meeting as a official member of the committee. Uh, in regards to our last meeting on the fifteenth, um, the, uh, one particular issue of significant importance was that the committee did vote unanimously to adopt the C M at risk uh, delivery methodology. So we will be adopting a C M at risk, um, uh, methodology for the delivery of the high school. Uh, in that regard, there were some representations made that by virtue of adopting this methodology, we would possibly be looking at uh, an earlier request for funding in two thousand twenty-three. That particular issue is still in flux. Um, we had originally anticipated it might be June of two thousand twenty-three, but right now, uh, we're still a little bit, uh, unclear as to whether or not we will be making that request in June of two thousand twenty-three. So stay tuned. There'll be more information in that regard. Uh, as for other matters attendant to the school building program, uh, school building project, I should say, um, the, um, uh, O P M, the, uh, design team, the architect and our administration did present before the M S B A's Facilities Assessment Subcommittee on the twenty-second of November. Um, it was an interesting meeting. Uh, they are, uh, they embrace strict time standards. So we had twenty minutes to present and we were held strictly to that twenty minutes. In regards to some of the comments that we received, I will just, uh, read from an email that we received from, uh, Ms. Gomes, who's, uh, one of our contacts at the M S B A. Uh, there was some interesting comments, um, not all of them positive, but generally speaking, the meeting was, uh, uh, a productive one for our district. Um, in speaking to the superintendent after the meeting, it was related to him, at least through our O P M, that, um, you know, if these meetings, if these assessments and these, uh, comments don't lead to a lot of controversy and have the meeting go sideways, it's generally considered a good meeting. But, uh, some of their comments involved, uh, the following items. Uh, there was, uh, a comment regarding the site plan and development of programmatic, programmatic, programmatic adjacencies, uh, appreciation for the layout of the small learning communities and assembly areas. Uh, civic presence, um, there was some concern, at least on one member's part, regarding the way that the building is, uh, proposed to be positive on the property. Uh, he was looking at the issue of civic presence of the building and the view upon approach. Knew that was an issue. Uh, transition between athletic fields and the building, uh, location of the connections program, adaptive P E spaces. Uh, the athletic, the, uh, existing athletic stadium, there was one comment that, um, we may want to consider, um, not uh, restricting the, uh, the name of the stadium to a stadium. It would be like a public space of some sort. Something about the location of the pro product program and the potential opportunities to reduce cost by virtue of the fact that we're looking at approximately nine hundred dollars per square foot, uh, the price tag to build this building. As of Tuesday, the district did receive its, uh, schematic report review comments. The district then has, uh, and our O P M and design team has fourteen days to turn around on the, uh, comments. And, um, one of the areas of, uh, uh, so concerned, but one of the requirements is that, um, the district must complete a special education submittal. There's some pretty extensive requirements under module four regarding, um, the, the manner in which we will be delivering special education services in the new building. And, uh, the, uh, district will be required to submit to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education an extensive report on how these deliver, delivery methodologies will be enacted. So, uh, if anybody's interested in what that entails, please refer to, uh, module four appendix B uh, on the M S B A website that gives you all the information you would need regarding the, uh, special education submittal. And, uh, with that, Madam Chair, I will conclude my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Just very quick clarifying question from me. Do we, does the district committee need to vote on the C M at risk?
You know, um, probably should. And we could probably put that on for our first December meeting.
Uh, Madam Chair couldn't pick up your microphone. I think you recognized me. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, if I may add, uh, Attorney Gleason, uh, one of the comments that was made in, uh, the presentation from one of the members was that the educational plan submitted by the school system, uh, she thought was a model plan for other regional school systems to follow in their building projects. So we did receive uh, some complimentary comments on our plan. And, and I wanted to just add that I will be meeting with Skanska and the designers on Monday to complete the requirements, uh, that Mr. Gleason, uh, spoke to in his report.
We're grateful to Kirk for that and thank you to Joe for all of that uh, great organizational work for that important subcommittee. Uh, over to personnel.
Uh, personnel has no report. We'll be meeting on Monday of next week and we'll be able to report at the subsequent school committee meeting.
Thanks, Mike. Over to policy. Anything more, Karen?
Uh, we met on the fourteenth of November where we worked on policy K C D. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled for the thirteenth, but I actually just emailed my fellow members because if we want to review it on the fifteenth, we need to move it out. So, um, we'll try to move that meeting up to next week so we can have it ready.
Alright. Uh, let's see, over to audit advisory. Maureen, anything to share?
We're meeting tomorrow at noon and there's still an opening for a Stowe representative.
But thanks so much for getting that going. Uh, Sharon for Dear J.
Dear J has not met, um, it will, Dear J will meet again, uh, next week on Wednesday.
Okay, good work happening there. Thanks, Sharon. Uh, Karen for CPAC.
Uh, just that CPAC has a meeting scheduled for next Monday evening. It's their, and, uh, their, uh, monthly meeting.
Great. Thanks, Karen. Uh, for the R triple A C, we are, we met with Desi, uh, Kirk and I did last Wednesday to enjoy another round of edits. Um, so we have now put the regional agreement into Peter Mello's hands, our attorney. He is looking over what I think is really just one remaining piece. And that's, uh, relative to the buildings that are leased by the district from the towns and how we manage emergency repairs. So it's fun stuff. It mixes in the lease, the lease agreements and, um, town assessments. Yeah, Kirk.
If I may, Madam Chair, I'm going to tie two of the reports together in this way because in reviewing the, the R triple A C document, uh, the regional agreement with, uh, um, Attorney Mello, um, the incurring debt was also a conversation we've had with him. Um, he's going to be presenting to the school building committee in January, I believe that's January twelfth on incurring debt relative to chapter seventy-one, uh, sixteen D and chapter seventy-one sixteen N, which are the procurement procedures that are, uh, we would use in master general law as mentioned in the regional agreement, um, for the building project.
That is going to be at our, which meeting, Kirk? Do you know? That is going to be at our, which meeting, Kirk, do you know?
Uh, Attorney Mello will be joining us on the January
Fourth or eighteenth.
Uh, well, Madam Chair, we're gonna be discussing those dates at the next school um building committee meeting, but it's a, we're shifting to Thursdays.
Oh, so you're talking about at the school building committee meeting.
Meeting, Mr. Mello, Attorney Mello will be there. I would, that's why I was saying I was sort of tying two, two committee reports together.
All right, you confused me, which is easy sometimes. So, all right. Very good. Um, so we're still on track for the R triple A C to get that um regional agreement amendment to the towns for uh town meetings. I'm still very hopeful that we're gonna be able to do that. Um, as soon as Mr. Mello gets back to me on this most recent piece, I'm gonna send it back to Desi, which means we will probably not look at it until January, but I am hoping that um that will happen then. We're at the will of Desi. Um, so guys, let's talk a little bit about items for the next agenda. You guys might notice that we only have um, pardon me. We only have one meeting in December. It is, pull this up. Already full. So this is what we're gonna be looking at for next time. Joe?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. Actually, I don't have any items for the next agenda. I wanted to revert back to uh the um uh comments of the superintendent and then as I've often quoted as saying, you know, that uh those in the practice of law dwell on small details and the superintendent has represented that uh the building committee will be begin meeting on the second Thursdays of each month. I just want to clarify that um that is the tentative plan at this point. But lest I be uh subject to undue criticism, uh, I have made it clear to the members that this, because we did, the committee did vote uh to establish our prior static dates for meeting. I wanted to give the the members an opportunity to be heard. So it will be subject to a vote at the next meeting, but the tentative plan is to go to that second Thursday of each month. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Great, thanks, Joe.
Mr. Gleason, thank you for putting the cart back behind the horse again.
I'm the one who's gonna get in trouble, Kirk, that's my.
Madam Chair, looking at the uh planning calendar, uh, I do not believe we're gonna need to be moving into executive session into December. I don't think we'll be prepared to do that yet regarding negotiations.
Okay, everybody, so you've been notified. Which means it may need to happen at the January fourth? Potentially, Kirk?
Yeah, I I think that in the planning calendar, we'll just continue to kick that can down the road until we get to the point that we need to call that executive session. As you know, negotiations are dynamic. They move quickly at times and then can go at a snail's pace at times. So we're just gonna have to manage that.
Okay. Anything else, everybody? Um, and I cannot see any of you, so just jump in.
I have a question. Um, is the bu- the budget hearing in January, is that listed on here at all?
Yeah, so a couple of meetings back, we decided to make our second January meeting, um, the budget workshop.
Okay, cuz I, I um the budget workshop, cuz I do think it would be helpful to have that executive session before the budget workshop.
Yep. So the executive session um is currently now on the January fourth agenda and uh the budget workshop is January eighteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thanks, Amy. Uh, anybody else jump in if you need me to add something here?
Sorry, Leah, did you say that the budget workshop was going to be the sole agenda item for the January eighteenth meeting?
That is the goal. Anybody else? Now stop sharing. And I think the only matter of business left is a uh adjournment motion, so I'm gonna move to adjourn. So does anybody have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Amy. And uh, no discussion here. Let's just take the roll. Scott, I'll start with you.
Yep.
Myself, yes. Shondor?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
And Brett?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody, so much.